I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now to appoint the 2020 Board Chair, I'll ask for a motion.
I'd make a motion to nominate Lance Granzel as the 2020 Chair, and the nomination cease.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I'm gonna hand the meeting over to the Board Chair.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, and now I'm gonna hand the meeting over to the Board Chair.
Next is the appointment for the 2020 Board Vice Chair.
I will make a motion to appoint BJ Hoffman as the 2020 Vice Chair.
I will second that motion. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I'll ask for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now this is the approval of the minutes of 12:23:19.
Make a motion to approve the December 23rd minutes.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have is Employee Services Awards. Something we're doing a little different. We used to do this at a Christmas party, and we're doing it at the board meeting.
Yep.
I have Jessica Laura. She is not present at the moment with a 10-year award. Can you hand that to her? Michelle Eichmeyer, come on up.
Come on down.
Come on down.
30 years. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Fast 30 years.
Hey, Michelle, can you take that back to Lorretown? Thank you. Next I have is Wes Wies for 20 years of service. Come on down, Wes.
Thank you.
Can you have yours down to present?
Thank you, Russ.
Did you bring yours down to present?
I've got him.
She gave it to me.
I gave it to her.
And the rest of them, we're gonna let the department heads do their own. So...
I want to congratulate Cheryl Lawrence on 30 years of service with Hardin County. It's very much appreciated. You do a great job, and we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next.
I have a 10-year for Tiffany Eisentrager. She started in the Treasurer's Office and then came over to my office, the Assessor's Office, so I would like to congratulate her for 10 years of service to the...
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you, Tiffany.
In the Community Services Department, we have two people that will be getting awards. Would you like to come up, please? The first one, they're both very important parts of our department. Carol Haywood has been with us now 20 years, and she's kinda like the glue that keeps everything together. We're often out of the office and have a lot of appointments and everything, but we can always count on the Carol's there and taking care of things. So congratulations, Carol, and 20 years. And our other one is Mary Nelson, which a lot of you probably haven't seen much of Mary, because Mary was...
Thank you.
...from our friendship club in Iowa Falls, and Mary's been with us five years. She started out as the assistant, and probably didn't know what you were getting into, because shortly thereafter, the coordinator resigned, and Mary became our coordinator. And she does a wonderful job, and has always come up with new ideas, and has gone that extra mile in a lot of things, so we appreciate your service. Five years.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you for all you do. I know the people appreciate it.
All right, and we got Tim Wendelow. He's been here for 35 years. Congrats, Tim.
Hey, thanks, Tim.
He takes care of the trouble for you.
Wes, did you have any?
She's not here.
Do you wanna recognize him?
I had my office assistant, Rebecca Frericks. She's been with us for five years, and just like Lynn says, she's kinda the glue for our department. She kinda keeps track of all the bills, keeps everybody in order. So I wanna thank Becky for her five years of service.
Does somebody wanna bring up the Sheriff's being... Dave's not here.
I'll do it.
All right, good.
I don't need to give you this anyway. Here, switch this out.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yes. Oh. Okay, first we have Bill Rom in recognition of 25 years. We also have Carla Gier with 20 years. Josh Nelson, 15 years. Pete Lepley for five years, and Jeff Brenneman for five years.
Can I just say one thing about the Sheriff's Office? As you read the paper, you watch TV, you see that there's, just like there is an EMS, there's a shortage of law enforcement officers, and I think we're really blessed to have the longevity that we do. There's so much turnover in law enforcement. There's so much, many reasons that new and law enforcement officers are hard to find. So having five, five, 15, 25-year, you know, members of public safety is a very commendable thing, but it's also kind of a reminder that at some point, we have to look to a new generation and start, you know, impressing the qualities of law enforcement officers. So, yeah, very commendable.
Taylor, you had some others that weren't here.
I did, yeah. I didn't know if you wanted them mentioned, but...
But let's mention them.
Will you go back? Do you want me to come up or from here?
Come on up.
All right, all right. Well, first we got Carol Adams. He's also at 35 years. He is a part-time employee now, but he worked here for, you know, years for full-time. And then Shane Shao Shao has been here for 25. He is our head mechanic. Keith Crosser has been here for 20. He helps with one of our digging crews. Bruce Deacon is in the office. He has 10. And then Clint Frey is a mechanic with 10 years, and Dan Nelson, a motor grader with 10 years, and Dave Hilsibek, a motor grader with five years. Yeah, we had a lot this year.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have is the appointment of board members to their county's representation. We have a whole list of these.
I'll go ahead and go through the list. I'd make a motion to approve the following. To appoint Renee McClellan to the Emergency Management Commission with Lance Granzel as the alternate. Lance Granzel as the primary to the Hallerton County Solid Waste, as Hoffman as the alternate. Hoffman as the EMS Council Representative with McClellan being the alternate. Iowa Workforce Board, Granzel. MICA Board, primary being McClellan, alternate Hoffman. Region 6 Planning, Granzel with alternate Hoffman. Second Judicial District, primary McClellan, alternate Hoffman. Heartland Risk Pool, primary Granzel, alternate Hoffman. Juvenile Detention, primary Granzel, alternate McClellan. North Iowa Response Group, primary Hoffman, alternate Lyle Juski. Hardin County Firemen's Association, primary Hoffman, alternate Granzel. 911 Board Representative, McClellan as the primary, Granzel as the alternate. Board of Health, Hoffman as the primary, Granzel as the alternate. D cap Board, McClellan as the primary, Granzel as the alternate. Senior Issues, Hoffman as the primary, McClellan as the alternate. Green Belt Home Care, Hoffman as the primary, Granzel as the alternate. Central Iowa Community Services Board, Hoffman as the primary, Granzel as the alternate. Hardin County Trails Commission, McClellan as the primary, Granzel as the alternate.
Okay, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Going off two sheets here, so bear with me a little bit. Next is the attendance at the Iowa State Association of County Meetings.
I will make a motion to authorize attendance by county employees to the meetings set up by the Iowa State Association of Counties for the year 2020, and that expenses of those attending be paid by the county. The courthouse does remain open on the days of those meetings.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the 2020 Holidays.
I'd make a motion approving the following holidays. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, January 20th, 2020. Memorial Day, May 25th, 2020. Independence Day will be observed by the county July 3rd, 2020. Labor Day, September 7th, 2020. Veterans Day, November 11th, 2020. Thanksgiving, November 26th and 27th, 2020. Christmas, December 24th and 25th, 2020. And New Year's Day, January 1st, 2021.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is our 2020 Legal Newspapers.
Okay, I will make the motion to approve the Time Citizen, the Ackley World Journal, and the Herald Ledger as our three legal newspapers for 2020.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now is our 2020 Appointments to different boards and commissions that we appoint for.
I'd make a motion to appoint Adam Seward to the County Conservation Board for a five-year term commencing January 1st, 2020.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make the motion to appoint Trent Lambert as the ex officio member to the County Conservation Board for 2020.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Lance, do you just wanna explain the reasoning behind it? I think we all know because of Heartland Stance, but I think just so...
This is something that came up in the December Heartland Meeting that we should put somebody on as an ex officio to help. It could be a board member, it could be whoever we really wanted, but to help for the board's interest, the county's interest. The conservation is, once they're appointed, you guys work under your own board, and we have no control over that. So this is just a little bit of guidance that they could give or come back to us with things going back and forth. I know Wes does a good job, but they thought we should have an ex officio on there as well. They're an autonomous board. Your board is an autonomous board. So this is just an ex officio that we put on there to help guide and come back and forth.
Are all the other counties that are in the risk pool in the...
I don't know. He just brought it to us on the December meeting and thought that we should do one, have one there. So we put it on there right away.
Thank you, Lance.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'd move to appoint Jeff Hoffman and Amanda Winter to the County Board of Health. These are three-year terms commencing January 1st, 2020.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the Mental Health Advisory Board.
I'll make a motion to approve Bev Dirksen, Kathy Hansick, and Ruth Norum to the Mental Health Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is the Zoning Adjustment Board.
I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of Roger Sutton to the zoning board, zoning adjustment board, excuse me. This is a five-year term commencing January 1st, 2020.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now the Board of Condemnation.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'd make a motion to appoint the following individuals to the Hardin County Board of Condemnation for a one-year term commencing January 1st, 2020. And the group of Farmers Everett Harms, Bill Lawless, Steve Perry, Don Hauser, Neil Hadley, John Kicks, Brian Lotterbach. Property owners Steve Manater, Harold Muller, Scott Williams, Kenneth Butt, Joe White, Jeremiah Andrews. Real Estate, Ed Bear, Brad Fialin, Mike Nisley, Carl Stevens, Gene Steelman, Marilyn Reinertson, Leon Herndon. Business people, I have John Zoski, Gene Muller, Roseanne Primus, Greg Salvo, Carla Gunderson, Troy McDonald, and Brent Perry.
Okay, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? This board hasn't met in years.
Yep.
Once you're on, it's pretty tough to get off. You gotta let us know. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have is the Pioneer Cemetery Commission.
I'll make a motion to appoint Christine Burks and Edna Lyman to the Pioneer Cemetery Commission, and these are three-years terms, three-year terms.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have the Weed Commissioner.
I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of Luke Davison as the Weed Commissioner.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just, we'd, in our budget process, we'd been talking to Taylor about moving forward with completing a lot of the duties of the IRVM department, and Luke was very, I don't know, fluent in a lot of the terminology and knew what was going on, and so transitioning him into, you know, more of that role, and so I think there's a good cohesive relationship between Taylor and Luke to keep moving the IRVM goals and initiatives forward. So that's good to know that we have that in place.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, no more, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have is Prairie Rivers and Iowa Resource Conservation and Department Board.
I will make a motion to approve the appointment of Eric Nielsen to the Prairie Rivers of Iowa Resource Conservation and Development Board.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? He's been on it for a few years. He's gonna have to let us know if he wants off. Any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is set date and time for the 2020 regular board meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular time for the board meetings of 9:00 AM for the 2020 Board of Supervisors' regular meetings.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just think that having it earlier helps with the department heads that have to come down here. It's not in the middle of the day. It also allows us to attend like IFADC meetings. We can continue to have drainage immediately following. And then I know just some of the logistics that Justin had expressed from the press standpoint, that this is just a better fit earlier in the day. So I think it's a good change.
Yeah, good discussion.
On Wednesdays. Yep, sorry.
Hearing no more discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have is the Medical Examiner Investigator Services Agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the Medical Examiner Investigator Services Agreements with Marlo Williams, Eric Eugenio, Chelsea Itis, and Thomas Creighton, effective January 2020 through January 21st, at $200 per case.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to consider a pay increase for the Medical Examiner Services. I think $250 would probably be a more comparable rate of pay. We saw their services used several times over the last weekend, and I just think to keep the interest there, because it kinda seemed, it seems to go in waves where you're committing your time and time away from friends and family and the holidays, and so I would recommend increasing the pay to $250 a case.
If this is something you'd like to change, I would ask for amendment to the motion.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to have them be paid at $250 per case versus 200.
Okay, and I'll second the amended motion.
It's been moved and seconded for the amendment to change from 200 to 250. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have is the Resolution Naming Depositories.
I'd make a motion to adopt the Resolution 20-01, Resolution Naming Depositories per Iowa Code 12C be adopted.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Oh.
Oops, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have is an Investment Policy.
Make a motion to approve the investment policy for the fiscal year 2021.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have is Hardin County Embargo Resolution.
I'd make a motion to approve the 2020 Embargo Resolution Number 2020-02.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have is the Hardin County Temporary Road Closure Resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for temporary road closures for fiscal year 20, or fiscal years 20, 21, 22, and 20... Oh, no, excuse me. For fiscal year 2021, it's Resolution Number 2020-03.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Utility permits. I didn't have any, anything with secondary roads.
Nothing really to report. Normal winter activities for now.
Okay. Now we have is the Approval of DOT Title VI Nondiscrimination Agreement.
So this names Lance as the chair and Joe as our... He's the executor of all this Title VI stuff. And the second thing you'll prove is it has the list of the requirements. You need to follow all these to get federal money, and they're things you should be doing anyway. You know, it's pretty much like we have a contract. We're not gonna discriminate. That's kinda the basis of it all.
I'd make a motion to approve the US DOT Standard Title VI Nondiscrimination Assurances Policy.
Okay.
Or, yeah, Nondiscrimination Agreement, sorry.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And then I'll make a motion to approve the US DOT Standard Title VI Nondiscrimination Assurances.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Last I have is the Construction Evaluation Resolution, which is our matrix.
I'd make a motion to table the Construction Evaluation Resolution until... I personally would like to talk to Cindy Garza and Attorney Meyer to get a little more input on all the ins and outs. I know we've adopted it every year, but I think it's important to do our due diligence to make sure that we are giving everybody the ability to be heard on this, and I wanna investigate what the best ways of being heard and having open and transparent, you know, discussions about it.
Okay, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to table. Any more discussion? Hearing no more, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries to table. Public comments.
I just have a few things to mention. The Treasurer's Office is undergoing a little bit of change for title transfers. We're gonna be asking for a bill of sale for all title transfers, and we're starting that today, but our implementation date will be July 1, where we'll mandatory have to have a bill of sale to do a title transfer.
Can I ask? I've read about it in the paper and stuff. How formal does it need to be? Because I need, some people, I've bought in a vehicle and the person I bought it from got out a piece of scratch paper out of a notepad, wrote their name, address, phone number, wrote the make and model and the VIN number, and, you know, $600, and signed the bottom of it, dated it. Is that enough?
Yeah.
I didn't know how formal and informal.
It doesn't have to be formal at all. We have provided a bill of sale out there that's available if you wanna use that. We just ask that it has the year, make, VIN, seller's signature, the buyer's name, and the date of sale.
Okay.
So basically, it can be on any type of form, format, a napkin.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
We just need that information, and how much was the purchase price.
Right. I had somebody ask me on the back of the title that all that stuff's asked for, and that does not work as a bill of sale.
There's no purchase price.
Oh, I thought it had the purchase price.
Mm-mm. This mileage and...
We want that, but so far, we haven't been able to get that title changed.
Okay.
And we've wanted that for years and years, but with the revamp of the title years ago, we requested that, and it was not put on there. The Department of Revenue is pushing for this. It's not mandatory yet by law.
Right.
But I know they're in discussion of getting that taken care of so that it is mandatory in the state of Iowa. But we've decided to be proactive about it and try to get the revenue that's supposed to be coming to the Department of Revenue on these sales of these vehicles. There's, there were some investigations done, and a lot of money is being lost to the Rogers Fund
Yeah.
because of inaccurate disclosures of sale prices.
Yeah, and I just saw a recent case in Polk County where somebody had been buying and selling and had defrauded the state out of hundreds of thousands of dollars because of these low-ball dollar amounts and no documentation to support it, and so, yeah.
Or jumping title.
Right, or jumping title.
Right, so we're gonna...
And I appreciate that. Yep.
And get it done. Originally, we were gonna start January 1, but we didn't have enough time to get that out there to the public, so to be fair to the public, we thought we'd give a six-month window to get everybody in tune to bringing that in. We'd like it, you know, starting now, and we're gonna ask every single customer, but...
You're not gonna send them back for that at this point, but just make them aware.
Right.
And if we have somebody that regularly buys or sells, will we have the form that they can get a copy from one of your clerks?
Right, we have it online.
And it's online.
Or we have...
A paper copy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and we, at any point in time, can ask for one. So if somebody comes in and tells us, you know, they bought a 2012 truck for $500, that's, you know...
Right.
It's not a feasible thing, so we can ask them at any time.
Okay.
If we have before, or if there's any alterations, we're gonna have to ask for that bill of sale too. Now, if on the bill of sale that we have out there online, there's a place for a notary, that's not gonna be required unless there's an alteration or we have a question about the legitimacy of that bill of sale.
Sure.
Then we'll ask for that notary. So just don't, I don't want everybody to think it has to be notarized. There's a statement on there, you know, that it may be asked to be notarized.
Okay.
And then we have, we've also, with our door changing, we have our drop box used to be on the south side of the courthouse steps there. We've temporarily moved it out to the sidewalk on the east entrance. Until spring comes, we can't get it permanently fixed, but that's where our drop box will be, and we'll still be checking that every day.
Okay.
And then we have one other change. Lots of changes here.
Changes, good.
Yeah, so this one is our service fees for our website.